The. I mean, you guys told me this.
Thank you.
Same thing.
Well, so much about we.
Just friends.
Yes.
And my personal life.
Family person.
Like.
Don't talk.
Yes.
We're.
Glad you're coming too.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
So now we.
I live there, so it was time I know.
When she said it's all for style. And she looks good.
Yeah, no, I, um. Yeah, I still.
But they're talking.
Because we have, it's, you know, we have a little one, but I still live.
I'm living there.
They.
Like the no.
Yeah.
You'll be here.
I wonder what he wants to hear.
No, I'm frustrated.
That's.
So I'm just.
That's amazing.
Oh, gosh.
Sounds great.
Not a hard one.
That's nice that you didn't even charge specifically. Then I still talk kind of ability. Charge the bridge.
So.
He'd be charging more time.
I think that immediately.
He had a strategy.
This is maybe supposed to be an idea in top place.
Yeah.
Whether they just want to share them. We did this on my home chapter.
We're done with.
We're blocking for now.
Well, yeah.
That is.
Why do you know?
We want to talk about this.
It's.
Please go ahead.
I'm trying.
I don't want to see.
No, I really.
I don't change my time to find this thing, so I get.
Well, that is the real thing.
It was lost too.
But anything.
They could.
Yeah.
That is for a serious story or a truth.
I'm kind of.
This is terrible.
Like, oh, maybe I'm going to be just speaking.
Okay, we're going to get started. Uh, I'm going to call, uh, to order the Connecticut State Board of Education special. All right, so let's initiate a page and space.
Yeah. My.
I'm.
In the state of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no public participation today, um, and we have one item on our agenda. May I have a motion for item three A, Connecticut Technical Education and Career System, section ten point four B, complete, final three quarters. Second.
Well, just a second.
Done.
Done.
Thank you.
Attorney McKeon, it's like, I feel like I'm in. Fountain of Adam, you're. I'm just very mad.
I was going to say hello then.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, as you will recall, uh, this is a matter that's come before us this before a couple of times. The first time was on November sixth of two thousand twenty-four. With the board authorized the State Department of Education to initiate a ten four B investigations into, uh, CTECs. Economic Technical Education and Career System. Uh, this. Stuff along to that a few months later, uh, I met the board and gave an interim update as to how the investigation was going. This, uh, investigation took longer than they normally would have taken. Wanted to see how this would be progressing through the year. Uh, the CTECs investigation was focused not only on admissions policies that CTECs formally had to place, but also what happened when students were in these schools and how things that occurred during the course of school year. Uh, nonetheless, we got information from CTECs during the course of the school year and based upon that and other, uh, information, we're able to, uh, ultimately, uh, finalize this report. Just as a little bit of a background, uh, section ten four P is the vehicle under the Connecticut statutes by which this board can implement the education law in this state, set forth in section ten four A. Uh, they iterate some of the interests and then they have a gentleman. All statutes that fall within Title X of the, of the Connecticut General Statutes. Title X is that part of statutes that deal with K twelve education. Uh, and the genesis for this investigation actually occurred in, uh, early October. Specifically, on October tenth, uh, I was made aware, uh, someone who showed to me and contacted me regarding an email that had been, uh, disseminated by the then-dominant superintendent of CTECs, Justin Lo, to, uh, the school building administrators and the head of their counseling departments, uh, which was throttling to state police. And that fell within the context of prior discussions that we had had with CTECs by the state department of education. CTECs had previously implemented what they called safety review committees, by which they would squeeze applicants, uh, to the schools and try to determine if they posed at risk or they were, they somehow had safety concerns, therefore they were, uh, excluded from the school. But this occurred prior to the, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, the department, uh, particularly Robin Sisier, the head of regional school choice, because three of these CTECs schools are within the catchphrase of the chef's school choice options. Uh, had talked to them and, uh, the initial number of students they were trying to was going to, I believe, was three. And that was mutually agreed that for different reasons, uh, CTECs was not an appropriate program for them. It was our understanding that that safety review committee system had ended. Uh, we discovered, however, during the second part of the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that they are up and running again. Uh, ultimately discovered that from April to June of two thousand twenty-four, CTECs was using state to review committees to, uh, exclude students. I sent a letter to the executive, then executive director of CTECs on July third, noting that this was a violation of federal and state law. We subsequently had a number of conversations with them. We were advised by CTECs they were moving forward a lottery process that essentially, you know, the safety review committees had already worked and had already done what they had done. And that they were going to get rid of them and they're going to move to a lottery process. So looking back to what I said before, in October tenth of two thousand twenty-four, I received a copy of an email from, again, that is from Superintendent Justin Lo, which painted a very troubling and contradictory picture, contradictory to what we had been advised. Uh, I looked, I quoted the, the relevant portion of it, uh, within this report, but essentially, uh, the gist of it was, he wrote, "This past year, I raised the duty of the safety review board, which by our current numbers, right or wrong, has disallowed a large number of students from our buildings, seventy-three percent of which are special education." Uh, the additional statements regarding, uh, the decry the fact that there are certain students that, quote, require nurses, parents, behavioral therapists, and so on. They talked about, I, he talked about, uh, the fact that we had had meetings with commissioner and with other members of the, uh, State Department of Education, noted that the state believes we are in violation of federal laws by continuing on with the safety review board. Nonetheless, these states, I'm capable of bias a year, but if I didn't, we would have had over twenty-one hundred special education students in our schools. Uh, so. Uh, then, with respect to the lottery that they had proposed, it turned out that this was not to be blind lottery, but rather lottery that the then, uh, interim superintendent felt they could manipulate. So they could have what he said, the right kids. Given the context of the rest of the email, the right kids were those kids who are either not students with disabilities or if they were students with disabilities, uh, they were ones who had minimal, uh, needs. As he wrote in a very agonizing, uh, insulting, uh, passage, "We all have a favorite kid who is special education. Many of them do not need services and do not need to give the accommodations." Okay? So essentially, those are the good kids, the kids who needed more, more interventions or not, not so good kids. The safety review committees that were set up had a number of administrators who staffed them, uh, and what they would do, staffed each kid who had been given an offer to within the school. They would then go to the safety review committee. And, you know, keep in mind, if these are kids with disabilities who are eligible for special education, under federal law and all of state law, it's the planning and placement team is to sole body that it's a legal responsibility for recommending a program for these students. Uh, also under ten, uh, ninety-five Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, if a student has been offered admission to CTECs, there has to be a transitional PPT. And the PPT might say, you know what? This program cannot offer the student a free appropriate health education in a restricted environment. That's the general standard. That's fine. That's, it's their job. That's perfectly appropriate. However, these students, some of these students who are excluded by the safety review committee were special education students. So essentially, the safety review committee superseding the planning and placement team and making its own determination, which would violate violations of federal law as well as state law. Uh, the, uh, and there were also regular education students, students without disabilities, who had the deed to be, whose behavior, not only in the prior year, but in the seventh grade even, had, in a prior district, they decided that, well, they pose, that they're too dangerous to come to our school. Uh, CTECs in the course of my investigation, uh, provided me with a, a spreadsheet of students and, um, those of students who had been excluded by the safety review committee and those who had been withdrawn or had been withdrawn during the school year. And granted, some of these students had some pretty troubling disciplinary histories. I, I'm, I'm not going to sugarcoat that. Uh, and also granted, CTECs is not just the typical academic setting. You know, you're dealing with some dangerous instruments. It's trade. Nonetheless, pursuant to state law, they are public school districts. And they are subject to the same laws expressly on the state statute. They are subject to the same laws as any other public school district. So that would be as if, uh, a kid had been going to transfer from one district to another district. And let's say, go to West Hartford, they said, "Oh, no, sorry, you engaged in behaviors two years ago in your district, why don't you leave?" They couldn't do that. Same is true with CTECs. Uh, yes, there could be, as a result of that, place a, a greater burden on CTECs, on their staff and so forth, to ensure the safety of that student and other students. But the bottom line is the law forbids, uh, CTECs from excluding students based upon prior disciplinary disputes. And that's what was happening in this, uh, safety review committee. There were a number of students who were excluded who were special education students or students who were disabled, uh, and received accommodations in section five oh four. Uh, in fact, during the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, according to CTECs and documentation, the state review committees denied admission to one hundred fifty-eight students. And remember, these students had already received offers to, uh, attend. Forty-two of these are approximately twenty-seven percent for students, uh, with disabilities. Whether they be special education or section five oh four. The criteria for somewhat vague, uh, conundrum subordination, I suppose, of the danger, what does that mean? Conundrum subordination. Uh, there were students who had been expelled in a prior school year. The intelligence would have run their course, but they were expelled and it couldn't have been for anything. And it could have been two years before in seventh grade. I put in my report, uh, some examples of students who were found with drug paraphernalia or vaping. Obviously, it can be that it's not encouraged amongst students or poor students. A minor student addition to CTECs because they were in possession of drug therapy or, uh, vaping a year or two before with this. Typically, it was difficult to, to draw a causal link between vaping or having drug therapy and being a safety of such magnitude that they couldn't be committed to CTECs. Uh, there was one student who had had various deferrals, but in the seventh grade, in the eighth grade, he had been engaged in, in behavior that resulted in him being denied, uh, uh, attendance at basketball practice for one day. Obviously, if that's the consequence, we're not talking a serious offense. Safety review committee excluded. Uh, sixty-seven of these one hundred fifty-eight students, again, both students with disabilities, students without disabilities, hundred fifty-eight, uh, sixty-seven of the one hundred fifty-eight appealed. Because it was an appeal process. Everyone was done. Uh, this, with a process that seemed to have offered no real opportunity or plan for those who were appealing. Some of the students, uh, appeals and additions were accompanied by letters from parents or emails from parents from the school that said, "Hey, you know this kid? He's a good kid, made mistakes." There's one kid, he had, his dream had been to attend CTECs from when he was a kid. He was excluded. Um, so this would ease the saying, this is a problematic and illegal process. Uh, as I noted before, what is reading this report took a while, so we wanted to track to see how things were doing, whatever it did. And I want to thank the, the current administration, CTECs, Dr. Alice Pritchard and Pritchard and, uh, her staff for being so helpful providing documentation. Uh, and one of the spreadsheets they gave me had, I think, about seventy of the kids who were withdrawn during the school years. And I'll tell you, I went through them one by one to determine why they withdrew, whether they were students with disabilities or not. Now, there are some kids who, uh, withdrew because they moved. Well, okay, that's, that's fair. Other kids got there and said, "Yeah, well, maybe the trades aren't for me." And so they withdrew. Again, that's fair. Uh, but there were kids who withdrew for no particular reason. According to no particular reason provided. And so, and it's in the report, so you, you cannot say definitively why they withdrew. But when one then thinks back to that October tenth, two thousand twenty-four email, these, yeah, when I saw it, I had it two days earlier, was actually authored to disseminate the, uh, when the, then from superintendent talked about, we were able to disallow smoking students, smoking special education students. One has to wonder, and, and during the course of the investigation, I had been advised by people, and again, it's, it, it's kind of secondhand, it's hearsay, so you really cannot, that's weight on it, but that students were routinely counseled. This is not the place for you. Think you can get back to your district. What I found, uh, interesting as well, uh, as I said, these, these spreadsheets were very detailed, so it's helpful. But yeah, they wouldn't, they couldn't explain why some of the students were, they were just, let's say, were hit, moved, or again, or decided they didn't want to trade. Uh, but they also listed those who the PPTs had determined this was not appropriate program, this being CTECs. Now, before I joined the state, I was a private practice representative in school boards for many years, then I did special education law for decades. So I'm pretty familiar with it. And what struck me is that there were fifty-five special ed students who's PPTs withdrew from the school, transferred to other programs. Now, you know, CTECs had a number of schools, it's a big system. So fifty-five, you know, may not be an overwhelming amount. But I analogized it to a school system, like one of the private district sites, I mean, the, the possible district sites, but of that, it's a special ed for, and fifty-five students transferred out of the district, uh, would have been pretty high of. So this seemed to be an inordinate number. And one thing that struck me is that typically, if a student is not doing well in the particular programs, because they perhaps need more restrictive setting, they might need a therapeutic day program, they might need a residential placement, uh, not always, but typically you need something more strict. So it's generated by the student's needs. Student not making reasonable educational progress in this current program despite, uh, the intervention that are placed in the student's identity. These cases, there are a couple of students who went from CTECs to adult ed. Uh, one, one or two were to the job corps. These are very unusual programs replaced in by a PPT. In fact, uh, I never read it back, maybe in my years, I read it, cause maybe one kid, kid who's in went to adult ed. That wasn't a PPT program replacement, that was more a, uh, individual decision. Both of these kids were suddenly sent back to their own high schools. They're going to one public district, but not a public school district. There's no indication as to why this student could not make an educational program or progress in a public school system, albeit one that has a trade component, could somehow, it's more appropriate to send back to, uh, public high school and to their own district. Uh, again, when one reads thing in the context of this, uh, email, when one considers it in the context of typical special education, uh, programs can help teams work, this was, struck me as extremely unusual. Uh, so in the end, approximately two hundred and twenty, along with the fifty-five special ed students during the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year who PPTs transferred out of CTECs, approximately two hundred and twenty additional special ed students withdrew during that same year. Furthermore, another hundred and two students who were five and four students, uh, also withdrew. That constitutes thirty-eight percent of the overall total, approximately nine hundred and eighty-seven students who was drew for various reasons during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Now, when I say nine hundred and eighty-seven, remember, I'm not including in there the ones who moved, the ones who decided they didn't want to give to trades. These are just students other than that who left, well, withdrawn without other reason. Thirty-eight percent of them, or a third of them, uh, students with disabilities is, is a troubling percentage. Uh, and again, seems to underscore the, uh, the idea that certain students who had, that they were being targeted and essentially exited, well, CTECs, from CTECs system. If a student has challenges, if you kick a student in the foot. So if a student has certain challenges, it is a responsibility of the, uh, district to determine what do we need to regard those students. Now, if these students own districts, uh, my placement team said, "Yeah, we think this is appropriate for, for program." But keep in mind that representative from CTECs with Veneto's transitional PPT meetings, uh, it's really not the place that the, the district then say, "No, not working, this is not the place for you." And, you know, I'm, I'm taking up too much of your time here.
I'll take you back for us.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
I did, do want to say, however, so the bottom line was, it, it was, uh, I think incontrovertible. Uh, these state review committees, uh, specifically, but also the and the withdrawals constituted a violation of both federal and state law during the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, clearly as such, they totally violated the education law in this state. And so I would be recommending, if the commissioner would be, of course, ultimately recommending a far more dire, uh, consequence. There is however, good news. In November two thousand twenty-four, Dr. Pritchard was appointed the interim executive director, now she is the full-fledged executive director. Uh, new superintendent to schools as well, the first interim superintendent, when he came in, Dr. Pritchard, and now full-time superintendent. They had implemented a blind lottery. As you can see here from page nine of the report, the numbers are very high. This truly is a blind lottery. You have a number of students with a special education in five oh four who has been provided with offers, uh, and it's like someone set the switch. So I have to give a lot of credit to Dr. Pritchard, uh, and her staff for having seen the concern, understood the concerns and addressed the concerns. You'll say, go to the new sheriff in town, and that's, that's certainly, that's certainly the case here. So given that, given these, these substantial significant changes that has made the CTECs admissions process and also the, uh, going forward, the number of students who have been offered, uh, students with disabilities who have been offered, uh, admissions, uh, percentage of the overall student body is comparable to that state body, special education students. And, uh, so the recommendation is essentially that it kind of splits the baby here. Again, I've really kind of focused on the negative aspects of the report. While the positive aspects are currently for this, going forward. And so we feel that adds, this laundry has been implemented by Dr. Pritchard and her staff. That indicates lines with the education law in this state. Nonetheless, given the prior history, and this is no reflection of Dr. Pritchard or her staff at all, but just for this, like, again, given this prior return to conduct, it's our recommendation that the, uh, going forward, that CTECs provide to me, uh, quarterly reports ask you student admissions and withdrawals so we can determine, uh, how it's going and presumably we, we have every expectation, it's going to be positive. But nonetheless, we've got to do our due diligence. And, uh, then at some point, the, the department will come before this board and make an recommendation as to dismiss, uh, to continue to monitor or even if things are going south, which, you know, we don't anticipate, uh, proceed with, through an inquiry. But I do want to stress that very gratifying how things have turned around at CTECs, and it shows how change can occur with the, with the more people in place.
So, thank you, Attorney. Uh, I know there's a lot of sense after everybody's time and what we need to do today. But, uh, I thank, um, Attorney McKeon for that report, but before the board asks questions, I do, Dr. Pritchard is right here. I think we refer to her as executive director without a name in the report. Uh, but I really want to give you, uh, just a few moments just to address the board before they ask whatever question they have.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rutter. And thank you, Mike, for, for your report. I, I just want to thank you all for your efforts, uh, which was small team to go through the bigger work that we provided and to really try to understand those. I do want to say, as, as Mike did just say, you know, our team is, is very focused on moving forward. Uh, they did implement, I, I give lots of credit in this report, which I appreciate, but you know I didn't actually do the work. Um, you know, the team did implement a blind lottery, uh, it had very good results. Um, we still have a lot of work to do and Superintendent Mike Prako, who joined me in May, is very eager to help the team, you know, continue to move in the right direction and, and to continue to build relationships with districts so we can make sure the students have a seamless transfer to, it's not easy to transfer as an eighth grader out of district. Uh, I do think that's part of the strong story, but we need to know more about why kids are leaving us and, and to make sure we're doing everything we can for them. So we have work to do, we, we are looking forward to continuing to work with State Department of Ed and guiding us through this path and also to, you know, work with districts. But our team is ready and they have been working all year long. Our special ed team, our counseling team, our admissions team, um, has been working really hard, shows our academic and trade related, uh, staff to, to make sure that we're providing the best education that we can. So, uh, it's never, it's never pleasant to be called out for, for bad behavior, but we do appreciate it because we know that students deserve better than that. And, and we'll keep moving forward with your support and happy to continue to let you know how we're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchard, and I'm so glad to hear you say that the, um, the communication will open up with districts, because I think that is, that's key, that's most important. Not just that special ed team that follows that style, but to understand the district, so that, that to me is very important. So I look forward to your monthly updates.
Thank you.
To the full board. Uh, with that being said, questions and comments from board members. Any? I have a few. Oh, Gladys.
Question on the five oh four.
Fine.
I understand that, uh, special means, because I'm all five oh four, if I'm not all five oh four, it's special needs.
Yep.
So, um, I just needed to know that, you know, how the data on this, are those just five oh four or also being, uh?
That's, that's true, yes, you're exactly right. All special ed students are five oh four students, but not all five oh four students are special education. The distinction basically is, under special ed, they have individualized education programs. Uh, whereas five oh four, they're talking about combinations of qualifications. That, so yes, they were, uh, again, CTECs are very helpful with the documentation provided, and yes, there were students identifying as special ed and there were some other students who identified as five oh four. So there were two separate categories and, um, for, for purposes of this report.
Thank you.
Be very welcome.
Um, my question is really, is go back to, you know, October tenth, um, when, around that time, when, when you and Commissioner informed to me of these very appalling emails. Um, and it doesn't surprise me, though it saddens me greatly, that last year we saw so many students still affected, because as we know, that email didn't just simply, it went to not just a handful, it went to.
Yes.
Many. Um, my concern is the mindset out there, uh, and maybe you or Dr. Pritchard can, has this, um, this group been counseled and, because, I mean, this was your leader that was sending this out to many people. So the numbers didn't surprise that they followed sort of what. So the numbers did surprise that they followed sort of what he said about the right kids. Have they been counseled in any way?
Dr. Richard.
So I will answer that in a couple of ways. One is I would say that the unlike, my observation would be that unlike other districts that have gradually increased their population of students with special needs, the increase at CTEC has been rather profound, rather quickly. So, you know, we had nine percent about five, six years ago, and now we're at eighteen. So it's a big jump, and I don't think that enough has been done to prepare the district for that change that we need and how we need to adjust. All of our teachers are getting that training this year, but we have a long way to go. But I will, but I will also say that CTEC has always served students with special needs. Comprehensive schools have always served students with special needs in their curriculums as well. So I think we need to build on what we do know and we do well with students and then help them understand kind of the new landscape and how they can adjust. So I think it is an ongoing process of education and understanding. There was some good work done by our schools this year to think about how to better work in the trade areas of integrating modifications and other things. So there's work underway, but it is a culture shift, I think, probably for all districts, but certainly for us to kind of catch up with the times. But I, I see a willingness, particularly with the new leadership, Superintendent Prako, he's very, very committed to these issues and is going to help us make sure that we're on the right track.
I'm glad to hear. And it is, I mean, we see districts, individual schools can have a great influx of special ed where, you know, I look at Kristen as a classroom teacher, that, you know, all of a sudden, you haven't had this before. And it does take training and some professional development and how to. But I just want to make sure that their mindset is that the right kid is every student in the state.
Yes, I say that all the time.
Yes.
You know, all kids are the right kids.
Yes.
We need to keep saying that. And again, we need to also make sure that we have the support.
Yes.
Because you will get discomfort from teachers and others if they don't have the right training and they don't
Yeah, very funny.
We have a long way to go.
And just that, that, you know, this report has not been to date everyone with a broad question. You know, I know that CTEC has a lot of extremely dedicated staff who are committed to all students. This was more of an institutional administrative type process, a problem as opposed to, I mean, this is not intended to say that every person in CTEC somehow has my special ed kids or something like that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm certain, I'm certain they were just as saddened and upset about this as we were to find out. So, you know, certainly, a teacher is a teacher embraces all children. So. Any comments? Again, so what we're going to be voting on is the resolution that's on the front page of the report. And as Chair McKean said, the biggest, which I'm very glad, as I was reading it, of that third piece, that quarterly updates, and I would assume if anything was needed for the board to know, you would be informed.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. So we're ready to vote? There's no more comments? All in favor of the resolution before you? Opposed? Who cares? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, I do want to make some introductions. We have our two student members with us today that will be spending the entire day with us. We have Samar Bastak, I've got to get his name, and Haikisha Lekela. Haikika Lekela. They will be joining us, they will be sworn in in two weeks at our board meeting, but they will be with us for the entire day. And I also'd like to welcome Dr. John Laduka, who's the interim chancellor.
Yes.
The chair is on the day of the Connecticut State Colleges and Universities. So welcome.
Yes, thank you.
With that, a motion to adjourn. And we're going to, I guess, we're moving forward.
Move yourself, please.